Well, we'd like to thank everyone for coming out today. This is our debate for the American Fork City Council. Sorry, I almost said Pleasant Grove. We just did that one last week. So by way of order, we will start with... Where's my little program? Right here. Joe left one for me. Okay. So we will start with a prayer, and that will be given by Kelly Stone. He is with M A T C, he's a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And then followed that, we'll have Kevin Barnes lead us in the pledging allegiance, and we'll go to that point. So Kelly, if you would come up.
Dear Lord, we ask that we're gathered here today to try to do our due diligence as citizens and try to understand the many issues that we have facing us. And we ask thee for open minds and to help all those two candidates feel to express themselves clearly in the thoughts that they have. And we ask for thy blessings upon this great institution of the republic that we live in, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Kevin. So quickly, as I reached out to the candidates, I got an email from Carlton Bowen, who is one of the candidates running for mayor, and he indicated that he's going to be out of the country. And he has submitted a brief thing that I will pull up somewhere in here. There it is. He's prepared a statement to read to everybody. So he says, "I thank the chamber for hosting the debate and regret the selected date conflicted with previously planned commitments. I encourage voters to view my blog, carltonbowenforafcity.blogspot.com, to see my stand on the issues I have thought are important while serving as your American Fork City Councilman for the past four years. There is a difference in candidates, and voters have a choice this election. I encourage citizens to carefully consider all of the candidates for elected office for American Fork City in that to cast an informed vote." And Brad Frost is also unable to attend today, and so he also gave me a statement. So let me pull that one up. Brad says, "To all present at this morning's debate, after learning that my counterpart was not able to attend today, I chose to uphold a longstanding tradition with my boys and attend the opening morning of the Utah State Alc Hunt. I sincerely apologize for not being in attendance and would encourage you to visit my website at votebradfrost.com. There you will find information that I see important to our city's future along with my personal contact information. I would encourage you to reach out to me, and my promise to you is that I will respond to your personal request. Again, please accept my personal apology and know that I see a bright future in store for this great city in which I have had the pleasure to serve in the city council for the past six years, working diligently to make the city a better place. You can expect the same effort, commitment, and love for American Fork if I am privileged to serve as your next mayor. Sincerely, Brad Frost." So with that, I'm going to invite our moderator, Joe Filon, to come up. Joe is the owner of Tim Rental here in American Fork, although he does not have a vote in American Fork. He lives in Cedar Hills, so we're going to call him an unbiased moderator. And he is currently serving as the Chair of the Board for the Chamber of Commerce, and he has done some amazing things in that capacity, so we're excited to have him here. And he'll go over the ground rules of how we're going to do the debate this morning. So let's give him a round of applause as he comes up.
Thank you, Josh. I am very honored and privileged to be with you today. I'd like to thank the American Fork Hospital for their hospitality and allowing us to come and have this debate here. It's a great facility. They've always been a great member of the community. And also for each one of you for volunteering to serve our great city and being willing to serve, so I appreciate that very much. So this is how we're going to go about doing this debate. First of all, we do have a timekeeper. Christine is a timekeeper. When your time is up, you will hear a very loud audible beeping or sound, so you'll know that your time is up. What we'll do is each candidate will have two and a half minutes as opening statements or introduction. We'll start with Barbara, and we'll go down the line. We only have one microphone, so we'll just pass it down the line. I'll just go to the end and Stacy, you can give it to me when you're done. Every person will have 60 seconds to answer the question. What we'll do is we'll start with Barbara for the first question, and then we'll start with Jeff on the second question, and just keep on going down, so one person isn't always getting the first answer to the questions. If anybody wants to have a rebuttal to a question, then just raise your hand, and you have a 30-second rebuttal time. If one person requests a rebuttal, then everyone has the opportunity for that 30-second rebuttal. And then in the end, we'll have a 90-second closing remark statement. Any questions on how we're going to run this debate? No? Okay. So without further ado, we're going to go ahead and have Barbara introduce herself. She has two and a half minutes to do so. When you're done, please pass the microphone to Jeff.
What do you say in two and a half minutes about all these years on earth, especially all these years in American Fork? I have lived here for 40 years. I have been for close to 30 years at that time. I was a reporter for the American Fork Citizen and then the Daily Herald. I've covered American Fork City government and the people, most importantly, the people and the residents of this wonderful community. When I covered it, I was serving as a watchdog, as a watchdog for the public to make sure the government didn't do anything wrong. Most of the time, they didn't, which was fine. But I would kind of still be in that same mode. I would feel like I would be the same way. I would want to be the watchdog on the council to make sure that people didn't do anything wrong. So anyway, background on me, I graduated from BYU 100 years ago. My major was broadcasting and communications. I've worked for KBYU Television, and I worked for the newspaper for 30 years, and I'm now retired, and I picked up a part-time job at UVU doing some writing. So it's not a conflict of interest anymore, so I can still take the knowledge that I have learned through that time about our city, about the things that work in government and the things that don't work, so we don't waste our time. I would like to be able to take this knowledge and serve the community that I love so much. That's it. Minute and a half, I did it.
Thank you. Jeff Schwerer, running for city council. I'm currently serving as a city councilman. I've enjoyed working with the council that I've been with and the mayor. I really have enjoyed working with Mayor Hatfield. Really appreciate his love for American Fork and what he's done for American Fork. I'm an attorney by trade. I've lived in American Fork for 23 years, have grandchildren and children in American Fork City. I've enjoyed working here. I grew up in Orem, born in Wyoming, but I grew up in Orem, so I've been close to this valley for a long time. I hope that you would vote for me this next four years. I don't intend on running more than an eight-year term as a city councilman, but I would like to serve four more years. I think that we've done some great work in the city council, and my goal is to try to reduce our debt. We spend a lot of money on paying for debt each year, and I'd like to reduce that any way that we can. I'd rather spend our money on services than on servicing our debt. And so I voted against the road bond four years ago. That's what got me involved. I was sitting on my treadmill, and I thought, well, if not me, who? And if not now, when? And so then I ran at that time and was fortunate enough to become a city councilman for American Fork City. Like I said, I'm an attorney by trade, but I leave our attorney work to our attorneys of our city. I'm a city councilman, not the attorney for the city, and that really helps keep the right hat on, so I don't make mistakes that way. So I enjoy doing that. I've loved American Fork City. When I moved here back from California, there were cows like next to our house, and I was so excited because in California, the only thing that was next to my house was three brother houses. We're almost on top of each other. So I enjoyed that rural part, but I also understand that we're going to grow dramatically. This is a marvelous place to live, and so we've got to prepare the best that we can for growth, and we need to really look ahead and try to be visionary about what roads need to be put in there, how much boundaries and how much space we need to preserve for roads and other things. And so I look forward to the city's growth, and I'm excited to serve four more years as a city councilman. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff and Barbara. My name is Kyle Barrett, and I'm also running for city council here. You know, just a little bit about me real quick here. Born and raised here in American Fork, sixth-generation American Forker. If I was elected, I'd be the fourth-generation public servant in American Fork. So what really is at the heart of me is the love of American Fork. I mean, I was raised in a home where my father was on the city council as a young child, and as I grew up, he became the mayor of American Fork. So I really have been entrenched in American Fork politics most of my life. I've learned about, you know, the good, the bad, and ugly about politics in American Fork, and maybe how we can improve. But kind of like Jeff here, probably the biggest reason I'm running is because if it's not me, then who? You know, sometimes we have frustrations that go on in our life, and sometimes we need to step forward to the plate and do something about ourselves, rather than stand in the background and say, well, I want this, and I want this changed, and I want this changed. We need to step forward and do that ourselves. You know, a lot of people complain. Very few people are willing to step forward and actually try to solve those problems when there's complaints there. Excuse the voice, by the way. I've had a really bad cold this whole week. But you know, the real reason I'm running, and when it gets down to the root of it, is what's taken place probably 10 to 15 years ago. I bought a home in American Fork in 2006, my first home in 2006. My utility rates were $55 a month. So five years later, they were $115 to $125 a month. That's a huge increase. I spent 20 minutes on the phone yesterday with the City of Orem Public Works, and they said, I said, "Why don't you have pressurized irrigation?" And they said, "Well, there's no need." I talked to Provo yesterday. "Why don't you have pressurized irrigation?" They said, "There's no need. We don't have a need for pressurized irrigation." Now, we have pressurized irrigation, so I want to make the best of it. I want to make the most of it. But I do not want to let the city make another $100 million mistake. That's what it comes down to. South of the freeway, we've got a ton of potential. This city is going to potentially grow by doubles, what I've been told, at least 15,000 to 20,000 people. This city is going to grow. It's inevitable. I want to make sure that we do it the right way. We get one chance at this, and I want to make sure that we do it the right way. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Carroll, and I want to thank you all for coming today, and especially thank the chamber, because I've had a lot of people who have mentioned to me that it's hard to find information about the candidates. So this is a real true service. I prepared a couple of notes. I hope you forgive me. I just wanted to be a little more focused in what I was saying. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself, and then why I'm running, and then why I think you should vote for me. First, I am married with three kids, ages 8 to 14. I grew up in Utah County in Orem, and I love living in American Fork. My family has been very involved in public service. My dad was the state legislator, the representative, and then the senator for American Fork in the state for 26 years, so I had a front seat watching how government works. Second, why I'm running. Two and a half years ago, the mayor and city council appointed me to the Park Tax Advisory Board. This is a very active board that provides direction for allocating money for parks, arts, and recreation. And I've been watching the city council during this time, and I have seen some things that I would like changed. Some members of the council I've been really impressed with, but I don't agree with the approach that others have taken, like not working with citizens, or not seeking to persuade, or to come to collaborative solutions, or not being prepared. I've said this before, and I feel like I need to say it again. Style matters. The way that you approach problems matter. This leads to why you should vote for me, my approach. I have three Cs that I aim for: citizen engagement, collaboration, and creative solutions. This approach definitely comes from watching my dad work at the legislature. I've seen the most effective people to be those who were creative problem solvers. I also learned the value of collaboration through my involvement with the park board because this board, we don't always agree. We have lots of reasons for why we would want money in different places, but I have the ability to see other people's points of view and to come to a resolution. And I am proud to say that all the members of that board have endorsed my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, all, round of applause. Okay, so we've got different... I've looked at all of the questions, and I've kind of organized them in certain areas because they all kind of talk about, touch on different areas. So let's go ahead and start with, "What is your stance on tax incentives to attract business growth?" So remember, you've got 60 seconds, and we'll go with... We'll start with Barbara. Once again, what is your stance on tax incentives to attract business growth?
This is kind of a two-way sword because without the incentives, we're not going to have the growth that will go to other communities nearby, and we need the growth, the good kind of growth, the good jobs that these companies would bring to our community and our residents. The incentives should be minimized, however, and they can be done like tax increment financing or public infrastructure like roads and things like that to help people, to help the developer as they come in, to be able to build something that will be of value, but it's something that will remain part of the community even after they're gone. The incentives need to be carefully thought out, carefully studied from all sides, so that we can make a benefit to all of our residents.
Thank you. I'm all for them, and it's interesting, as a city government, we are only alive because the state says we can be alive. The state of Utah can always take away our right to be a city. Again, we work at their behest in a lot of ways because we're a creature of their creating. I like the system they've set up. The state has already put into place, when you give a tax incentive, you've got to check with all the taxing entities first. You've got to get their approval, so there's things in place already that allow for that. We should never give incentives that would be under the table, or any incentives to encourage people to come here without going through that process. That's a marvelous process. It says, "How much do you anticipate gaining by taxing?", and then by these entities holding off on taxes immediately. Their hope is that in the long run, like places like the Meadows, that you'll obtain a lot more taxes than you give up initially. So I'm all for them. They're structured in a way that they cannot be corrupted, so I'm for them.
I second what Barbara and Jeff said in many ways. I support tax incentives. Key words to that would be transparency, as long as there's full transparency on what's been taking place and what will take place. And also, I think it's important that we minimize those as low as possible. Obviously, we do not want to give away more money or more tax incentives than we have to, but I am in support of those tax incentives. I've talked to a number of cities, specifically residents of Highland, who have turned down Walmart, for instance. Walmart is a huge, huge tax benefit to the city in many ways, as long as all are dealerships. I know that the Highland City, many residents have said, "You know, it'd be nice if maybe if Walmart would have came to Highland and not Cedar Hills, we maybe could have benefited from that financially." So I do support those as long as transparency and as long as they're minimized as low as possible.
Okay, so I also support the economic incentive for businesses, but there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out. First of all, having low taxes in an area is already an incentive for a business. So focusing on that is not a bad tactic. The second thing I would like to think about, have you think about, is that the state of Utah does post-performance incentives. And what these are is that a business that either comes in or a business that's already there has to reach a carrot, has to reach a point before they actually get the tax incentive. And in this way, you're actually incentivizing the company to grow and work, and on top of that, you're not picking and choosing winners and losers. They pick themselves to be a winner by their success. And also businesses that are already in the city, it doesn't have to be a new business. They can also apply for these post-performance incentives.
Okay, next question. If you could go back in time and reverse the results of any past city council vote, what would it be and why? This time, we're going to start with Jeff, and then Kyle, and then Stacy, and then we'll end up with Barbara.
Thank you. I've had one vote recently that I would probably reverse, and it was about roads. We're trying to incentivize UDOT to run a road through the southern part of the city in a specific route. The problem with that is there's some farm agricultural protected zones that we can't go through for 20 to 30 years. And as I've thought about it more and more, I'm not sure, unless UDOT's at the table, unless we can get them to be there and say, yes, we're going to do this. If they're not willing to do that, then I'm not willing to hold up our citizens' ability to develop their property however they want to develop it. So that's one thing that I'd probably reverse.
I'm going to talk about just a couple real quick. I made a stance on this on Facebook. I believe that the city made a poor choice in the affirmative in supporting this road. So the road that Jeff's referring to, I would have voted nay on that. The city council at the time voted yes, but it's good to hear that Jeff said he maybe would regret that. The vote that the city council made on maybe pressurized irrigation, I think they should have maybe done a little bit more research, maybe talked with another few other entities, such as our N rate community, Orem and Provo. I was in, during the course of my Masters of Public Administration program, that I learned more about that pressurized irrigation and maybe the cost of it, and you know, how maybe that was not always financially viable for a city to be doing that when it's not absolutely urgent, and it was not absolutely urgent. So probably that, pressurized irrigation, probably the road that recently was voted on by the city council. And then one I would say that I was in support of would be actually the Meadows. A lot of people said, "Well, why are you giving all these people money down there at the Meadows?" I think that was a great choice that the city made in the Meadows development 15 years ago.
The 60 seconds is so short. Okay, one of the things that I was thinking about that maybe I didn't agree with completely was just recently, the city council approved a plat for a plan in the Meadows for some apartments. And this planning commission, actually, they had recommended that they don't approve the plat. But the reason that they recommended that was because it was an apartment complex on one side of the street with the parking lot on the other side of the street. And maybe there's some things that I don't know about this, but from what I've been able to tell with talking to the planning commission and a couple of city council members, I don't see a concrete reason why they should have approved it because the city kept... Sorry, excuse me. The planning commission was very concerned about the safety issue of having a parking lot across a busy street from an apartment complex, and it's very unusual to have that done. So I was going to pick out one thing, and that one comes to mind because I've seen it recently. That would probably be the one. And, okay.
Although I agree with you, Stacy, I definitely see where you're coming from when it comes to the public safety issue. And that was a very, very hotly contested item there on the city council budget, I mean, the city council agenda about those apartments there. I actually would have probably voted in the support of that. It's Woodbury's property. It's Woodbury's development. I do understand the public safety issue about how there's an apartment, then there's actually parking across the street. But I'm actually a huge supporter of property rights. It's Woodbury's property. It was zone commercial. They want to make it residential. I'm actually in support of that, but I do understand your concern there.
All right. Would you like to rebuttal?
Well, I'm a little bit confused. So shouldn't she have been able to give her response first before we rebuttled?
Correct. So I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and have Barbara finish, and then we'll go ahead and do a rebuttal for everybody. Kyle's already given his. Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay. And how many people are... We'll take back in time the question that I would have, that the city council approved, and at the time I was in favor of, was purchasing or creating the broadband. At the time, it was a great idea, having a public utility, and everybody needs broadband now. Everybody has it one way or another, and I can't say everybody, but most everybody does. But the problem was that right after the American Fork City purchased this and created it, they changed the rules and said that a community could not promote it. So we had to rely on others, you know, companies to do the promotion, and it did not become the moneymaker. It became kind of an albatross, but the city's doing well, taking care of it now.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and rebuttal. Stacy, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. Do I ever... I always want to say something, so...
Okay. First of all, of course, I believe in property rights and the ability to do what you want to do with your property, but within the construct of the processes we have set up with our city. So it has to go through the planning commission. It has to go through these certain things. And the city, as the city council and the planning commission, they have to make sure that everything is reasonable and that it works well. It's not only what the property owner wants. Otherwise, you would see a vastly different city. And I just wanted to point out before I have the last second is that that vote that you guys were talking about, they weren't voting on a road.
Just a few minutes. I'm planning commission versus city council. I love our planning commission. They work hard for nothing. Seriously, other than just the sheer joy of serving the city. You can't always agree with your planning commission. 99% of the time, we do, but as a city councilman, you have to act independently, and sometimes you need to override a city council or a planning commission or any other commission's recommendations. Majority of the time, we follow right along because they do a great job, and we love it, but occasionally, you have to make a decision contrary to your board.
In this particular case regarding that parking lot and things, the plan that was approved was better than the one that was initially turned down. There was more safety in that case, but I don't know if I would have agreed with it completely or not, but I think the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the community should be at least equal to the property rights of an individual or corporation.
Thank you. Okay. By the way, just to let you know, these questions were from people that have come in and the audience, so... I'm going to combine two questions because they're very similar. They're just a little different. So number one, how high a priority is road improvements for you, and how would you pay for it? And then number two, did you vote for or against the road tax? And would you vote for it today? So those are the questions. So remember, how high a priority is road improvements for you, and how would you pay for it? And how did you vote for the road tax? We're going to start with Kyle.
The roads are my number one priority. Now, that's not just talk. A lot of people say, "Well, this is my number one priority." You can only have number one. You can't have five number ones. You can't say, "Well, this is number one, this is number one, this is number one." You can only have number... You can only have one number one. Roads are my number one priority. I'm a huge supporter of public safety. I'm a huge supporter of recreation in American Fork, huge supporter. But roads has to be number one. It hasn't been for a long, long time. It needs to be number one in the city. So number one, roads, and by putting it number one, that means I'm going to vote number one on it almost in any situation, unless it's an absolute emergency, roads is number one. I did vote against the road bond. Looking back on it, it's a very, very difficult subject because our roads are very, very poor, but I still want to vote against it. The reason why is because of the approach. During my master's degree, I learned that the approach is absolutely critical, and the approach, in my opinion, was done wrong. Also transparency.
Okay, I also think that funding roads is a really high priority, but I would like to throw in a little caution here that the reason... One of the reasons that we got into this road problem in the first place is from siphoning off money that was earmarked for roads into other places. So I don't want to just fall into that trap and move all the money over to roads and take it away from something else. So I don't... I want to make that as a cautionary tale. I also, I think that funding roads will have to be a multi-pronged approach. I kind of don't think that what we're doing now is going to just solve the problem, that we can't just keep on going what we're doing because it hasn't been working in the past. So I kind of think of it as we need to do a couple of different things. One thing I would like to see done is what I call maintenance prevention, and we're doing some of those things now. And since I have such a short time, I'm going to move on to the next one, which was, we've mentioned some... mentioned something called a transportation utility fee, which would be adding a fee on in another place, but then reducing our, no, I don't have enough time to talk about it. Maybe in another minute.
I agree. I think roads are just the very most important thing because they are so durable. We need them, we need them for safety, we need them for the convenience of our residents. And for that reason, I did not vote for the road bond. Now that sounds strange, but I don't think that the road bond as it was presented was the best plan. I think what they have now is it was short-sighted. I think what there is now is the 10-year plan to resurface, take care of every road in the community, and I think that will work the very best. We cannot commit ahead of time and say, I'm going to do everything, you know, take everything away from some other things that aren't absolutely essential and put towards roads. It's like in your home, if you say, I'm gonna put everything extra toward a new car and then your refrigerator breaks. You can't wait five years to buy a new refrigerator. You need to keep your priorities locked in.
I voted against the bond because, and that's part of the reason I ran, enough taxes. We fix our roads as we can. We used to ride wagons on dirt roads, they get washboardy. I've been all over this country and the roads are in disrepair everywhere. They're difficult to maintain and they're very costly. We have a couple hundred miles of roads in this city. That's a million dollars, million dollars a mile. One thing I love that the city's doing now that's better is when we do a road, we wanna do everything. So we go underneath the road and fix all the utilities under the road, we fix the roads themselves. But roads are roads. I've been on some bumpy roads and again, it's really nice to have nice roads, but we also need to have good fire protection, we need to have good police protection. We have employees, a big share of our budget goes to employee salaries and benefits. Some of them state mandated that we have to meet each year. Roads are important, just like everything else is important. So I would not, I would not raise taxes to fix roads. We just do it as we can go, we pay as we go. Enough debt.
Okay, so rebuttals. Rebuttal, I think. So we have, looks like we have some rebuttals. So Kyle, you're standing up, we'll have you go first and then when anybody else wanted to rebuttal? Okay, Stacy, please.
I wanna talk about roads. I'm not talking about robbing Peter to pay Paul. I'm not saying emptying the budget and put it all on the road, just so we're very, very clear here. You do not rob Peter to pay Paul. I'm talking about any increases in tax revenue. So based upon projections, if projection was we get $1 million hypothetically for above what we expected for increases in tax revenue, I think we should take the mass majority of that money above projection and put that into roads. So not rob, not rob Peter to pay Paul, the increase above projection.
Okay, I didn't get a chance to address bonding at all. I did not vote for the road bond and that is because I don't believe in bonding for ongoing maintenance. I think it's really hard to get ahead that way and you wanna not have the debt for something that you're gonna still have the debt for in the future. The transportation utility fee that I, that I was talking about before, it would not increase the overall tax burden because you decrease your taxes and your property taxes, but it captures dollars from people that don't pay tax, property taxes. And there's of course more detail about that, but I'd like to do an overview.
Just one small rebuttal. Okay, if I hear one more politician say, a bond's not a tax, I wanna punch him. A bond's a tax, it may not be a tax right now, but somebody's paying that bond back, so that's all I have to say.
Amen.
Okay, next question. This one we're gonna start with Stacy. If Brad Frost is elected mayor, there will be an open two-year city council seat. Do you feel the person that, that takes third place in the election should be appointed to that seat? Why or why not? So there's two seats, there's two seats.
Yeah, I understand that part, but then what are they asking?
So, so the person that comes in, there's four of you running for city council. So two of you are gonna win. The question is, the person that took third place, should that person be appointed to the city council in the event that Brad Frost becomes mayor and his seat becomes open?
I think that that third person should get a definite nod and that they should be a strong contender. However, I think you need to look at the dynamics of the council and other factors that are being involved, notably experience, to pick that person. So the people that are, the city council that gets elected, they get a pick and I think that's really all I have to say.
As with, like with the roads or things like that, you don't make your decision ahead of time. You have to see who applies and what their qualifications are and make your decision at that point to make the best person to fit with their skill sets, to fit with the other people on the council so that we can have the best service for the residents of our community.
Thank you. I think it would be a very appropriate, if the one running, any of the two of us that don't make it would be interested in that, I think that would be appropriate since they put the time and effort into running in the first place. They should at least be looked at as part of that process.
I believe that they should be strongly considered for that, just like Jeff and Barbara and Stacy said, specifically Jeff here. For those who put forth the time, energy and the effort to actually get elected, I believe that they should be very, very strongly considered. Like Barbara, I wouldn't necessarily say for sure guarantee, but I would definitely say they should definitely be in the front runner, specifically, like I said, because of the time, energy and effort they put forth. But I did wanna discuss this real quick here since I got just a little bit more time when it comes to the way that the road bond was done. I think the way that the, how, the transparency of that was, was poor at best. I've written extensively on bonds and why bonds failed. I talked about Pleasant Girls Bond and how they requested 19, then 14, and then 11. They lose credibility really quick and really fast when you ask for all sorts of different numbers and when there's not very clear explanations of why you're asking for what you're asking.
Any rebuttals? All right, thank you. Next question. It seems to be surprisingly difficult to get through the inspection and approval process to open a new business. How can we expedite that process while assuring quality and safety? And I think we're back to Barbara.
There actually have been improvements made in the process that a business has to go through for the inspection and the occupancy of their new building or building that they're taking over. There have been improvements made with the checklist, the information that they have to go through when they go to their initial thing with the engineering department. I don't know exactly how I would improve it, you know, improve it to make it go faster, but I think communication at all levels, at the beginning, they need to know what's expected of them and having that checklist so they understand what the qualifications are that they have to meet, so they can meet those ahead of time before they even come in. I think that would, it's almost always the best way to come to a conclusion together quickly is to communicate.
Thank you. The person that's mostly responsible for that streamlining, and I agree that it should be streamlined, is Rob Shelton, our current city councilman. He's really pushed hard to try to make our city way more efficient, way more user-friendly, way more computer-generated activities to save people the time and hassle going to department to department. And so Rob Shelton's been a great person to do that. He's really pushed the city and now they have a much more streamlined, better process to go through, so they go to one place, not to five different locations.
I think clarity and transparency is important. I think Rob's done a fabulous job with streamlining that process making, come on now, we're 2017. We should be able to be able to get online and use the internet to actually be more efficient and effective as a city overall. So I definitely, I'm in support of that electronic format. But like, once again, it goes back to communication, transparency. When a person opens up a business in American Fork, they need to know what steps are required and how that's done. And these will be very, very clear and straightforward there. So I'm friends with very, several small business owners and I definitely understand some of their concerns in the past and how things have gotten better in the future.
Is it out of line for me to ask you to read the question again? There's a couple different.
It is?
It is out of line. Oh.
It seems to be surprisingly difficult to get through the inspection approval process to open a new business. How can we expedite the process while assuring quality and safety?
Okay, perfect. So I think Jeff mentioned this, but the city council just recently has been talking about and approved a measure to put the commercial licenses online. Because in the past you had to go to city hall and then you had to go to different entities. I'm not exactly sure, I think Public Works and maybe Fire Safety and submit your different things there. And they compiled it all into one so that you can do it there and I think that will help a lot. Yeah, that's it.
Any rebuttal? Next question, we'll start with Jeff. If you, give an example of a time you failed and how you handled the situation. Or, there's another one that said, and what you learned from it. So let's do that. Name, times you failed and what you learned from that.
Wow, that's a lot of, through a lifetime, that's a lot of failures. I don't know if it's related to city council or not. I think the time that I failed playing football in high school. I was just a little skinny guy, about 119 pounds, and they were having us go against a varsity and bash heads with them and try and do things. And I just stood back and didn't participate. And because I stood back and didn't jump in there and get mauled, I was not put on the football team. So that was, something I learned from that is I've gotta be willing to get mauled if I wanna participate in certain activities.
I like that, Jeff, that's good. Because we do need to step forward and there's some times that we wanna, you know, improve or get better there. You know, I'd say one time that I've failed, obviously lots of times unfortunately in my life I failed, but I look at those failures as a learning experience. Those are times in my life where I've, I guess you could say I've gotten tougher both physically and mentally because of those failures. But it's also been a learning experience. One thing that I would say that comes to government, I built a shed and I built it a little more than 200 square feet. Well, that's a failure. Anytime you build a shed in American Fork, I was, I was told, anytime over 200 square feet, you have to get a billing permit. So that was a failure for me. I thought, well, it's close enough, it's 208, 212. Well, the rule is 200 square feet, you have to get a billing permit. So I, they shut me down and I had to go file for a billing permit and all that good stuff. But it was certainly a learning experience. 200 square feet, 201, you gotta get a billing permit if it's over 200 square feet. So that was a failure, it was a learning experience.
So I'm trying to think of a situation that would actually be applicable here because obviously I have a lot of learning experiences in my life. But one thing that I learned from was that I was in charge for the park tax. We have an application, a grant application, and I was in charge of creating that application. And the process that I used for that was I went to different entities throughout the state that had applications and I kind of picked and chose different things from those applications to create our application. And it ended up being sort of long and sort of gave us the information that we didn't feel like we needed. So the next year I went back and I just did, I just did the things that I felt like we needed as a committee to get the information that we needed. And the second time around, I felt like I really did learn from the first one. And it was so much better and the feedback we got that it was a lot easier to use and it was easier for the committee to use too because they gave us only the information that we needed.
I think I'll turn the microphone over to my husband, he can tell you all my failures, but we only have a minute. So anyway, I can think of a couple of different times and I don't wanna give too many specifics because I involve other people, but there are times when I have not spoken up to defend someone or to defend an ideal. And I'd go to bed that night and I can't sleep because I know I had, you know, it's a sin of omission because I didn't do what I should have done. It's not that I did anything wrong, but that's a failure also. And what I've learned is go ahead and speak. You know, there's that song, be brave, let the words fall out and do what you should do. I'm not quoting the words right, but speak up for the ideals that you stand for, it's important.
Thank you. Any rebuttal? All right, next question. We're gonna start with Kyle this time. How important is public transportation to our future and how can the city ensure that it is handled intelligently?
I would say the public transportation is very important. There are many things that are more important than public transportation, but it is very, very important. I'm a supporter of UTA. I'm not a supporter of the way that UTA does things currently. I have a friend who's been there for eight years at UTA and he has some, some serious concerns and frustrations with UTA. He thinks that they're not very transparent at all. He thinks that the way they go about businesses, in his words, a little bit shady. I do, I'm a supporter of it because I believe that there's lots of people and it's gonna get worse as the size of Utah grows, as the populations increases, that we need to make sure that public transportation is readily available and easy to use. But I would like, as a city councilman for American Fork City, to take a stronger stance on the way that UTA does business by making, holding their hand in the fire about the way they go about spending our tax dollars.
Okay, so public transportation, I would say as the city grows and as our metropolitan areas grow, that's when it becomes more crucial. I've had the opportunity to go to big cities throughout the world and the country and their transportation systems are phenomenal and they're able to move people around. And it would be great to have that, of course, I would love that, but I don't think that our infrastructure is there already. So what we need to do is come up with a process for how do you get from all roads, all cars to public transportation? And it can't be just like a one-step thing, you have to incrementally keep those things in mind. And one thing I was thinking about, UTA, I wrote it down and I can't remember what I was writing, but maybe it'll come to me later.
In Utah County, we have approximately 10 times more developmental, developable area than there is in Salt Lake County. We're going to grow, there's no question about it. And the demographics is changing also. People want public transportation and they need it. And like Stacy, in other areas it works and we can make it work. One thing I have enjoyed about living in Utah is the fact that we can learn from other cities' mistakes. In other areas, they've done things first and we can learn what they've done right, what they've done wrong, what things have worked and what things haven't worked. And I agree that UTA, like any government entity, should be transparent and should listen to the residents and the people who live there and use and will use the amenities that they create.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got my own concerns about UTA and the way they spend money. We should not be putting in systems that don't pay for themselves. If it's, I'm still concerned about the rail system and whether that's even cost-effective. We're sprawled out here in Utah area. There are not enough people here to make a giant transportation system. Places like Boston, I love that system. You get on the little rails and you go anywhere without a car, which is, was just tremendous. The problem is, we're not that big. We don't have millions of people in this area yet. And I guess, I guess we could plan for that, but I don't wanna, I want it to be self-sustaining. If they're not self-sustaining, we shouldn't do them.
Can I have a little?
Yep, I'll go right ahead.
Okay. When we're speaking about UTA, well first I wanna talk about the light rail for one second. It's actually been something that has been, like a lot of people around the country view it as a really good success. And I would say if you've ever ridden the light rail, especially during rush hour, it's really busy. So I think that's a proof that it's, that it's effective and that it can work, whether it's cost-effective. I haven't looked at that. And then I, the other thing I was thinking about with UTA is that the state has actually looked at putting it as part of the state, because right now it's a special service district.
I'll just expand on that just a little bit here. Once again, public transportation I think is important now, it's gonna become critical as Utah grows. We know that the growth of Utah is gonna absolutely, potentially double by 2015, or excuse me, by 2050, excuse me, 2050. It's gonna double in size potentially, so public transportation's unbelievably important or it's gonna become critical. My concern is still with UTA. We know that bus rapid transit going from Provo to Orem is over budget. And the reason why is, is because someone's not holding UTA their hand in the fire. No one's holding them accountable in my opinion.
All right, thank you. Next question, we're gonna start with Stacy. Next question, we're gonna start with Stacy. What is the best and worst thing about American Fork?
I can talk about American Fork all day, so, that's a good one. The best thing about American Fork is one hundred percent the people. I was terrified to go knock on people's doors and talk to them about running for city council, knowing they probably didn't wanna talk to me, and I was shocked at how kind and nice and respectful the people of American Fork were. And in conjunction with that, I would say, is the community spirit that I feel here. When we moved here, this is eight years ago or something, when we moved here, people said to me, "Are you going to the football game?" And I went, "What football game?" And they were talking about the high school football game, because the community, all comes together, we are a part of a community. And since then, we've attended so many events and different things, and people have such a great love for American Fork. So, people have a sense of community. There's so many people that have roots here. When I talk to somebody, I talk to Laurel Shelley and then it reminds me, hey, Shelley Elementary. I talk to Kyle Barrett and that reminds me of Barrett Elementary. So, anyway.
My first thought was the people. Sorry, I sound like I'm a diddle machine, but absolutely, I have absolutely wonderfully loved the individuals that are in families, business owners, people that I have met through all these years of interviewing, being in their homes. I love it. I love the spirit, the kindness, the giving, the concern about their neighbors. I don't know what I could pick for something that would be bad. That's really hard. There's very little that I don't like about the community. What I would be concerned about is the growth, to make sure that we maintain the spirit that we have, even though there are new people here who aren't aware of it.
It's the same thing, the people. Running for city council, I've met some marvelous people. Working on the city council, I've met some marvelous people, really good, good-hearted people. The concern I have, I think, is maybe the marginalized citizens in our community and some of the things that maybe go on behind closed doors that we're not really involved in, 'cause as many good things as there are, there's still some really significantly bad things, as far as child endangerment, different things like that. Drug use is a big issue. And so, there's some things that I'd like to try to solve as a community, rather than as a policing effort where it's just punishment, that somehow we find a way to train and encourage young people to be the best they can be. If they just can figure out who they are and what they are, they can do marvelous things on their own without a lot of government intervention, but that means that citizens will have to be involved a great deal more. And that means getting out of our comfort seat and moving out and trying to help people.
I would definitely say that the strongest point about American Fork is the people and the community pride, so we all pretty much stand on the same page there. I definitely think that the people are our strong points and the community pride that people have for this great city. When it comes to probably some of the bad, I mean, obviously, there's so much good about American Fork. We live in such a great area. We have I-15 running down our city, unlike some other cities, which I actually think is a strong point. It's easy to get the freeway, it's easy to get around. But as far as maybe some of the bad about it is, I was invited to participate in the Citizens Academy with the police department there, and we've just had the one week there so far, but it's been a little bit of an eye-opening experience for me so far. Obviously, the police, they do a lot of bad things unfortunately, they find out about bad things or they, you know, investigate bad things. And what was made aware of me is the amount of domestic violence that goes on in American Fork City and child abuse. And that was kind of an eye-opening experience. You don't always hear about that, but, you know, that's some of the things that I'd like to see changed, is a little bit more outreach to those domestic violence victims.
Anybody wanna, three-second response? Okay. Next question, we're almost out of time here, so I'm trying to get to as many questions as I can. Next question, we're gonna go ahead and start with Barbara. Should the city continue to fund and manage the Still Days or look at other options? For example, hold a private sector to manage it?
Having been a member of the Still Days Committee for the first years, I would say yes. You said it either or, and I just did while I complained about the... I think we should continue. There is small amount of money that goes out and a tremendous amount of volunteerism that works with that. I don't think you would get the volunteerism with the private sector. So, you would wind up with a smaller thing. Still Days really builds the community, it builds the spirit, it helps keep the spirit of, the sense of community, and this is something that we can use to keep, as people come in, we invite our friends and neighbors to come to the celebration with us and become a part of the community themselves. I think it's worth it.
I think the city should continue to keep control, and again, I don't wanna keep patting Rob on the back, but Rob's done a great job with trying to get more private entities to be involved, but the city should be in charge of it, and that way they can limit who comes in and who doesn't come in and why. I've enjoyed the City of Fun Carnival for a long, long time, and their giant corn dogs, that's what we look forward to once a year, is having a giant corn dog covered with lots of matter. So, anyway, I think the city should keep, continue to make change control, but always, we should always look for volunteers and private agencies and businesses to participate for advertisement and other things. I think we're doing a marvelous job and it's a great community event.
I love Still Days, always have. I remember going to Still Days even as a young child and it was really the highlight of my summer as a young boy. You gotta be able to go to Still Days and ride those rides, the City of Fun, and eat that corn candy and the corn dogs. I definitely love Still Days. I will tell you that it takes a tremendous amount of work on the city council's part. I do think we ought to continue to support that. I would maybe not even be opposed to potentially putting two city councilmen on there. Robbie Shelton, I cannot believe the amount of time, energy, and effort that Robbie has put in these last, this last year in trying to make sure the Still Days flows as smoothly, that there's no hiccups there. I think he's done an absolutely tremendous job, so I am in support of Still Days. I think it's a, it's a community pride, like these other communities, we have Lehigh and Pleasant Grove have rodeos, and American Fork has Still Days. And I'm really proud to say that, you know, American Fork has a place where we can all gather once in summer and celebrate this great city we live in.
So, I don't know if you know, Rob is actually my next-door neighbor, and I, one of the reasons I didn't wanna run for city council was because I don't wanna be in charge of Still Days. That's how terrible it looks. But I have given this a little bit of thought, because lots of cities have their festivals and it's a lot of work, no matter what, it's always gonna be a lot of work. But I think what we need is more volunteers. You need a board of volunteers that will take the burden off of the city council a little bit, because guess what? I'm not an event planner and I will, I will do what's asked, but you need a lot of people to do those things. And I know one of the things that I've always struggled with is having enough volunteers to do what they need. And this actually falls along with some of the things that I've been talking about, my three Cs, one of them is citizen engagement. I do think that the city, this is a worthwhile cause. When I was, during the parade, I was passing out these "I love A.S." stickers and you would be, there were so many people that wanted them because they had so much pride in the city.
I second that. Okay, thank you. Well, it's, our time is up, so let's go ahead. We're going to close with ninety-second closing remarks, and then after we're done, you and the audience wanna approach any of the candidates and talk to them personally for a few minutes. I'm sure they would be opposed to that. So, let me think here. We start, I think it's Jeff's turn, is it not? So, ninety seconds of closing remarks. We'll start with Jeff.
Thank you. I wanna thank all of you who've come. I know it's, it's a Saturday. I'm thinking of all the things that need to be done at my house, like my lawn mower and some other things that need to get done. My wife's out of town and she will be disappointed if some things aren't done when she gets back, so I'd like to get home and do that. Thank, I thank the Chamber of Commerce for doing this. It's, again, a lot of effort and I appreciate your volunteering to do this, give us a chance to have a forum, and all of you that have come, I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate working with the current city council and the mayor. It's been a delight in the last four years. Hopefully, I'll do another four years, but if not, I still will have enjoyed my time. And again, appreciate all of you being here.
Thanks for being here. Thanks to the chamber for putting this on. Thanks, American Fork Hospital, for allowing us to use this room. And thanks you at home for listening. Hopefully, we've educated you a little bit about the candidates that are running for this great city of American Fork. Just a couple of things here. You know, being on the city council's not easy, never has been easy. You have to make tough decisions, and sometimes you're a lone wolf. Sometimes you have to make a decision when everyone else says, "No, that's not a good idea," but you know that you have to stand by your laurels and your principles, and you know that's the right decision. So, I commend former, current city councilmen and the mayors in the past who've stood by decisions, have had to make tough decisions there. I will tell you this, by electing me, you're electing someone who is well-informed, who is well-educated, who is dedicated to the city. Okay? This is necessarily about me, but it's about my past. I have to stand by what my past generations have done, my ancestry, what they have done. My great-great grandfather was the mayor. I've had my great father, my grand grandfather was the city councilman and on the city council and as a city recorder, excuse me, bubbling there. My father was the mayor. I wanna continue that great legacy. By electing me, you're electing someone who is going to make tough decisions. He's gonna be well-educated, well-informed, and he's gonna make tough decisions that are well-educated, and he'll stand by those laurels. He'll stand up for what he has to say, and he'll defend the city in what he thinks is best for the city.
I am going to direct you back to what I said about why you should vote for me, and that is my approach. Citizen engagement, collaboration, creative solutions. And honestly, I believe in work and work and work, like work in understanding the roots of problems, work in collaborating with residents, staff, and other entities throughout the state, work in engaging residents and experts. And the last thing I wanna really say is, I know there's problems in American Fork, I know we have disagreements in American Fork. I've seen things with the police also that just are heartbreaking, but I am so optimistic about the future of American Fork. It is a fantastic place to live. We have such great people and such great community that I think we can overcome these problems. They're just, look, they're just begging for a solution. So, thank you.
Five council members and a mayor are not gonna be enough to get done what needs to be done in this community. We have a great community, we wanna keep it great. What we need is the collaboration or communication with our residents. We need to inform them about what the issues are and why they're important and going on that way. We need to listen to our residents, we need to make it easy for the residents to have their wishes and understanding be known. They are the experts in their neighborhoods, in their schools, in their communities. We need to all work together to get the work done, to make the, continue having American Fork City be the great city that it is. I love the community, I love the people of the community, and I want to serve. I think I can do a great job with that, because I have been collaborating and communicating with the residents for a lot of years, and I want to continue there.
Thank you, candidates. Can we give them a round of applause, please?
I think most of us are on social media.
Oh, okay, yeah. And also, if you would like to know more about them, you can reach out to them here, also, social media. If you, I'm sure if you Google their names, you'll find more information about them. Thanks again for coming, and thanks, American Fork Hospital, for hosting us.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.